Clerk Reinderson, did you get what she said?
She had to turn on the thingy, the disk.
Okay, now we're good.
I move to withdraw the 2014 Comprehensive Plan Amendment application concerning the urban growth area boundary.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to withdraw the 2014 Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And we're open for discussion now.
Yeah, no, I had originally brought that forward for the council and believed that there are other opportunities for us to look at the issue without making a comprehensive adjustment at this time.
Mr. Bond, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would just like to state that the city has a process if it is interested in changing its UGA boundary, it can negotiate with Kitzap County following the process laid out in the RCW, which does not require a comprehensive plan amendment.
This is additional work for us that we don't need to go through if we pass it.
Right.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, we're going to be voting on the motion to withdraw the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Can I stop you just one second?
Yes.
I don't think I was at the meeting when we did it in the first place. Does that make any difference?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor of the withdrawal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much. That motion carries.
Mayor, excuse me.
Yes.
Could we also clarify that the executive session was for the purpose of potential litigation under RCW 4230-1101 sub-I?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on now. Because we are running really late, and I was just wondering if you, Clerk Reinderson, we might work on A and B at the next meeting, do you think? I'm sensitive to my knowledge.
Do we need a motion to table them to the next meeting?
Yes.
You think so? Right, I think we can just all agree to shorten the meeting as much as possible. We'll just move those. Okay. So let's go on to item C, approval of temporary vendor's license, Slaughter County. Clerk Reinderson, could you tell us about that one, please?
Slaughter County Coffee has submitted an application seeking approval to place their coffee truck on city right-of-way located in industrial park at Lloyd Parkway. A map is provided to show the exact location they are interested in vending. They will be serving espresso drinks, smoothies, teas, Italian sodas, coconut water, prepackaged baked goods, and the truck is seven feet by nineteen feet. The public properties met on October 27th to discuss this matter and recommends approval of the use. However, the committee inquired whether a lease fee would be required in addition to the vendor fee. After reviewing the file related to the vending on city property, it has been determined that the lease fee would be prudent and has been set at a rate of $10 per month. This amount is consistent with other city leases. City departments and fire departments have reviewed the application and have submitted their recommendations and/or comments and have been provided to you. In addition, the applicant is still in the audience should you guys have questions. Staff has no recommendations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I move to approve the temporary vendor application for Slaughter County Coffee to use right-of-way in industrial park at Lloyd Parkway as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Clausen.
Under discussion, now that I'm looking at a map, I just wanted to share with staff, when you do this electronically...
Not very good.
You can't read the map. I'm not quite sure where that is.
It's not much better on this one.
Understand.
So this is coming up Old Clifton here, turn right onto Lloyd Parkway.
So it's right by Evergreen lumber entrance.
It's between RV and Evergreen, between their two entrances.
You want to come up to the microphone and that will be on record.
Yeah, it's Evergreen over there and across is their gravel pit, and that's RV on the other side. It's right between their two entrances. And I talked to both of them to make sure that it wouldn't get in the way of their trucks or anything, and they were both okay with it.
Well, I think it sounds like a really good idea, and I'm glad you're doing this.
Have you canvassed the area to see what the entrance is?
Yeah, I was, actually, the company that's right in the very beginning, Casco, they're the ones who suggested the spot for me. And when I went out and talked to RV and Evergreen, they were both, you know, they both thought that it would be nice and convenient, and it would be the only spot between McCormick Woods and the highway there before they go off to work.
Good. Hope it works.
Okay.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you for being so patient tonight, by the way. Okay. Any other discussion, council? Any other questions? All right, seeing none, and we're going to be voting on adopting the vendor's license for Slaughter County Coffee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. That motion passes. All right. Okay, let's see. We're at approval of October 14th council meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the council meeting minutes of October 14th as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any other corrections or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval October 14th council meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Extinctions.
Oh, that's, okay, we have, let the record show that Mr. Patanzu and Mr. Clausen are seeing because they were not present at that meeting. Okay, 7E, approval of lodging tax advisory committee recommendations. Ms. Reinderson, could you tell us about that, please?
Yes. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met on September 10th, 2014, to review and make recommendations for the 2015 hotel motel tax revenues. The committee is appointed by the mayor, confirmed by the council, and is comprised of four hoteliers and four funding recipients. The city treasurer projected in 2015 that the hotel motel tax revenues would generate approximately $76,000, plus the fund balance of $44,000. The total revenue to be dispersed in 2015 to $120,000. The committee, after careful consideration and based upon the proposed allocated funding, chose to provide funding to all recipients. A copy of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation has been provided to you. In 2013, legislators changed the structure of how funds were to be allocated by the legislative body. MSRC's interpretation of the change is as follows. The legislative body may only choose recipients from the list of candidates and recommended amounts provided by the local Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. However, a city or county does not have to fund the full list as recommended by the LTAC and can choose to make awards in the recommended amounts to all, some, or none of the candidates listed that is on that list. The selected recipients must be awarded the amounts recommended by the LTAC. Staff is looking for direction from council on how to allocate the lodging tax funds for 2015.
Yes, Mr. Chang.
I accept receipt of the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendation for distribution of 2015 hotel motel tax funds as presented.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Open the floor for discussions. Seeing no discussion?
I was just going to say, well, due to the late hour, I'm not going to go into what I wanted to say, but I will say this, that the allocations for $120,000, the reason I'm going to have a problem with this, and I'm going to vote no to this particular allocation of it, is because Cindy and I sat down and went through some information Brandy provided, which was the applications for the lodging tax over the last three years. And the first thing we noticed, it was very thorough, and everybody did a good job of submitting things that were legitimate. But one thing I did notice is that 90% of all the requests for reimbursements on lodging tax are advertising and marketing. And so when I look at this, I think, well, you know, in the last two or three years, it's been around $70,000 that we've allocated, and we've, people have done, I assume, pretty much 90% of their allocation for advertising and marketing. And now we're going to add another $50,000 into this mix for, I assume, if you go by the percentages that seem to be coming forth, advertising and marketing, including $17,000 for a new organization, which is going to do advertising and marketing. I frankly don't think this is a very good use of money to allocate this remaining $44,000 to do more advertising and marketing. It just seems like redundant, over the top. This is kind of money that just goes poof, doesn't produce anything downtown. You can't get in your car and drive around Port Orchard and say, wow, look at that nice bench, or look at this enhancement on the trail or in the park that we used lodging tax for, like other communities do. We just have advertising and marketing. So frankly, I just can't vote for it this way. You know, I'd like to take another look at it in a different way.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? Yes.
I did have a question about Explore Port Orchard, and maybe, Chris, you can answer. Is Explore Port Orchard a 501(c)(3) or does it have another tax designation of some sort? So when you would be looking for reimbursements of the $16,000, who would those checks be made out to?
Hi, Chris Stansberry. Explore Port Orchard is a consortium. It's made up of 501(c)(3)'s and the Port of Bremerton. So it's made up of Fathoms, Port Orchard Basri Association, City Museum and Arts Association, Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Port of Bremerton. And what we did last year, each of the organizations sort of chipped in some of their LTAC money for joint marketing. That's what the point of it was. And so each agency took a project and requested reimbursement, and it was reimbursed by each of the other agencies. So the packet that went for reimbursement, for instance, from the Chamber, was, here's the total bill, here's how much I billed out to Sydney, here's how much I billed out to Pobsa, and here's their reimbursement. And then Pobsa requested the reimbursement for their portion.
What I'm wondering is, why wouldn't you do it again this year the same way? Don't we have to have, doesn't, just say your committee, have to have a separate organization? Otherwise, say, if it's being distributed to you, Chris, then that money would go towards, say, the Sydney Museum. And wouldn't it be counted towards the Sydney Museum since you're representing that?
We made the separate request this year rather than each organization adding more to their personal requests, so that we were clearly defining the joint marketing effort. So the Explore Port Orchard will come in, the request will come in, in a package from each organization altogether this time. So each organization will pay their portion. Sydney Gallery will pay $1,000, Chamber will pay $1,000, and it will all come in in one package, and then the reimbursement would go back out to, because I don't believe we can, we can open a checking account in the name of Explore Port Orchard because we're not an organization.
Right. So why wouldn't each organization just ask for the amounts and then have it credited towards the organization, and then your committee make a decision on how those were spent? I see, I see a problem here. When we used to apply for funds, we had to be a 501(c)(3) or something like that, to have some kind of designation. But if you don't have that, then that means that we're just actually giving more money to each of the organizations. Isn't that right?
You're giving the money to the, to the joint marketing effort? It's just being paid for by the individual organizations.
I'd like to know, Carol, is that legal for us to give money to our organization that has no structure, I guess? I don't even know what to call that.
I'm not sure how this is done, but I wouldn't recommend that you do it without a contract because you have to have a contract with the entity where they say, this is what we're going to do for the amount of money that you're going to provide to us. And in the contract, the entity is identified as to what they are. So it isn't an issue of, do they have to be a 501(c)(3), or c)(2), excuse me, to...
Three. Well, RCW says it may either be a three or six.
For what purpose?
For, to receive lodging tax funds.
Well, lodging tax funds, okay. Well, that's, that's new to me.
So I think what you're referring to, 2728 Lodging Tax Tourism Promotion, so supporting the operations of the tourism-related facilities owned or operated by a nonprofit organization described under 26 U.S.C. Section 501(c)(3) and 26 U.S.C. Section 501(c)(6) of the Internal Roman Code. So if they're seeking reimbursement for a tourism-related facility, although they're operated by a nonprofit, they have to be a 501(c)(3) or 501(c)(6). If they're seeking reimbursement for tourism marketing, the marketing and operations of a special event and festivals designated to attract tourism, and supporting operations and capital expenditures of a tourism-related facility owned or operated by a municipality or public facility district, they're not under any obligation to meet a certain designation, but according to the section.
In other words, they do not have to be a (c)(3) or (c)(6) to receive funds for...
For those purposes.
However, they do have to make sure, however, and this is part of the legislative change, that all recipients must get a report to the municipality describing the actual number of people traveling on business or on a trip. It must be in three different categories, or could be in three different categories. It could be away from their place of residence or business and staying overnight and paid accommodations, or they have to provide proof that, to a place 50 miles or more than one way from their place of residence to a business for the day or staying overnight, and then from another country or state outside of the place of residence. So they have to, if they seek reimbursement from the city quarter, they will have to show in the first place how they spent and tracked the actual number of people traveling on business or pleasure in three categories to the state. It goes to me and I submitted to the state.
Mr. Clausen.
This is a point of order. I think we have gone beyond our time for this, and we need a motion. And I would move that we extend the meeting long enough to complete items 7E and 7F.
I second that. Okay, we have a motion to extend the time for our regularly scheduled meeting. Extend the time to complete 7E and 7F. Any, and a second? Is there any discussion?
There was a second, I thought.
But for me, it's kind of open-ended.
Mr. Cartwright, you seconded it.
It means that we're really just extending it into however long it takes.
Well, no, it's not. It's until E and F are accomplished.
Yeah, however long it takes.
Right.
Right. So I'm not in favor of that.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay, that motion carries. Okay, more discussion on lodging tax.
I would just add that I think Explore Port Orchard is a very proactive organization that's happening. And one thing that they're actually emulating is they're emulating the consortium that Paul's well set up where all the nonprofits get together. They coordinate their dates and their activities, and by pooling their money, they feel they get a better bang for their advertising buck. For example, instead of taking out four half-pages, they could take out the center folder, the insert, and things like that. They are actually very proactive, and this consortium, it's, it's interesting when you're getting the nonprofits all in one room to coordinate, and I think it's a great step, and I applaud their efforts.
It isn't that I don't, I mean, I'm just wondering if it's legal. And what I'm wondering is, when you write the checks out, basically what's happening in, it's going back to the organizations each of you represent. So instead of having it just be Explore Orchard for $16,809, it really ends up being the Sydney Museum, whenever you submit a reimbursement, gets that amount added to them, and it really means that Pobsa gets that amount added to theirs when a Pobsa representative submits the reimbursement. Do you see what I mean?
Can I make one more point? Because I understand what you're saying. The issue is, if you, if you added another thousand to the Sydney Museum, I, as a Sydney Museum, wouldn't be able to do the same kind of advertising that we're going to be able to do as Explore Port Orchard.
I know, I do understand that. I'm asking about the legality and where it actually falls into place. Since you aren't a separate organization, and since you are each representing organizations that are already getting money, what I see it as, is anything you ask for reimbursement, and I'm, I'm asking Carol, and I'm asking Brandy, that really is the Sydney Museum that is getting those funds. Because you don't have a separate checking account, and you aren't a separate organization. I mean, I understand the benefit of the committee, I'm not questioning that. I'm asking about the legality of writing checks, and then that turns that LTAC recommendation into an increase for each of your organizations.
Brandy, correct me if I'm wrong, but for...
Is that right, Kathy?
Well, I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding in the aspect that this actually benefited the, the way, the money.
And I know Fred will correct me if I don't have this right. That, so what we had was, we had six, seven, whatever, organizations that are coming in and asking for a certain amount of money. And in their budget is this advertising and marketing bracket, because in order to bring people in, that has to happen. And I think what they did was win-win. So they, they said, wait a minute, the Chamber's asking for this, and Sydney's asking for this, and Fathoms is asking for this, and if we all, and what they did this year, we actually saw as a result of the consortium beginning last year, that the amounts that each of these organizations came in and asked for was lower than they typically asked for, because they knew the funding that went into the consortium covered the advertising dollars. They got a way bigger bang for their buck. So they could come together, and it was actually a very economical thing. I think Brandy has covered the legality of it, and I, I think we would see, and/or it would be caught, if somebody comes in and asks for advertising dollars, that obviously runs through the consortium. So it really, I mean, it generated the fact that actually we saw the requests, in most cases, in those organizations drop, because they saw the benefit of doing co-advertising together and getting a much bigger bang for their buck.
Well, that makes sense, Kathy, except for one thing. Each of these entities this year, the nonprofits, are getting substantially more than they got last year.
Well, that's because you had way more money. Last year, we were just hamstringing with the little amount of money that came in. So this, you know, benefits the fact that now they, I mean, last year, we put most of the organizations in a position of not even being able to do what they normally do. The extra funding was there. So obviously, something was done right, because you got more lodging tax dollars. Obviously, more people came to town. I mean, that is good news. That is great news. We hope we see it again. And part of that very much could be, as a result of what the consortium did, with their marketing dollars coalesce together for a bigger bang in it. That's my thought, as somebody sits on the board.
Clerk Reinderson, correct me if I'm mistaken, but nobody gets these dollar amounts just given to them. They have to spend it for qualified work, and then they get reimbursed. Is that correct?
It would be a strategy to determine that when he issues the disbursement to that agency that they are qualified under the Bard's Manual or whatever requirements he needs to be met for disbursement.
Well, an LTAC, too, and disbursement for an LTAC fund. So, so there is some, there is some...
I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Chang.
On practical state, that these entities as a whole will receive the funding, and we would need to defer to the treasurer, and unfortunately, he's not here tonight, but to determine how that would actually look, because that's the treasurer's department.
Mr. Chang, and then Mr. Patanzu.
I'm going to support the recommendations here at hand, but I also support the concept that Mr. Childs is speaking to. I would love to see some of this money in the future be spent on wayfinding signs downtown, park benches along our pedestrian path. But that means we've got to submit an application and get that into the process, and I don't believe we did that this year. So I, I would support that in the future if it was part of this process, but I don't want to torpedo this process and, and try to back it up and interject our needs at this 11th hour.
Okay, Mr. Chang, and Mr. Clausen, Mr. Clausen, and then Mr. Chang.
Have I mentioned how much I love this tax?
Every time.
Yeah, you have.
I would certainly echo Mr. Patanzu's comments. I would add to it in the sense that Mr. Chang mentioned what Paul's well does to get a better bang for their dollar in advertising. I think we ought to take a look at what Gig Harbor does, because somehow Gig Harbor uses all of their funds to support their in-house marketing promotional person. I'm not quite sure how they get around an LTAC committee to do that, but it's something that I think we ought to take a serious look at as well. And just in case you didn't know, I really don't like this tax.
Mr. Chang.
I wanted to actually address, I, I agree that with, Cindy has brought up some good issues, and perhaps we could ask that Explore Port Orchard open their own checking account, or that they act under the umbrella of Fathoms of Fun, which has many, sort of mini organizations, like they do their, they do their parade, they do the Easter egg hunt, they do the chocolate festival. That might make it, that might make it sound a little better, that the check is going to one place, as opposed to, I'm not sure how it was going to go.
I would have to defer to that later. Probably 125% that he's not going to disburse a check to an agency that's not required, that, that obligations of receiving funds.
The other discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to thank the committee for the amount of time and effort that they put into coming up with the recommendations. I know that it's, as many times as citizen volunteers, it seems thankless, but we do appreciate your effort a great deal.
You're here.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to be voting on approval of Lodging Tax Advisory Committee's recommendations that we have on the pages in front of us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Let the record show, there's one on opposition, that motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to Bay Street pedestrian pathway discussion. Mr. Dorsey, could you...
Thank you.
Please.
On February 11th, 2014, the Port Orchard City Council authorized the execution of contract 028-14, thereby authorizing Universal Field Services to assist in the decision-making process associated with the Bay Street pedestrian pathway project and the potential right-of-way acquisitions of five existing overwater structures located along Bay Street. On August 12th, 2014, a public discussion was held on this matter, with the primary focus being a question-and-answer period concerning the decision-making for the following alternatives. Alternative one, terminate the federalized project at segment five, and that requires repayment of $300,000 and de-obligation of $1.5 million of new funding. Alternative two, Bay Street one-way, it requires reclassification of Perry Avenue to a 6,000 average daily trip, minor arterial classification. Alternative three, construct a deviated pathway within existing right-of-way that requires washed-out approval of deviations and eliminates on-street parking. And alternative four, construct a non-deviated pathway, but that will require the removal of the five overwater structures. At this juncture of the project's decision-making process, the mayor is requesting that a final decision be made by the Port Orchard City Council regarding the four alternatives presented and discussed, and that clear direction for moving forward is provided to staff.
I'm going to make a motion that's really kind of a hybrid of the options that are presented here, and we've got some comments for the discussion, in discussion, but my motion is that the council prefers to construct a non-deviated pathway, and that we should enter a negotiation to buy the five overwater structures from those willing to sell them. to sell them. Those unwilling to sell, I believe that we should pursue a deviated pathway around those structures.
Is that a motion?
That is my motion.
Okay. I have it written down, right? I'm going to ask you to read it.
That was off the top of my head, to be honest.
Really, really, okay.
I think I can do it again. The council, my motion is the council prefers a non-deviated pathway, and that we should enter into negotiations to purchase and remove the five overwater structures. In the event that there's any unwilling sellers, that we pursue a deviated pathway around those structures.
That was different than the first time.
Okay, well, it was...
It was different than the first...
Can we play the tape again?
I can.
I think the concept was the same.
Yeah, that was the same, and I'll keep mine second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Clausen.
Under discussion, if we were to develop a deviated path, that required DOT to approve, is that correct?
And obviously, the approval of the deviations will be based on the extent of the deviation.
That'll also affect the grant we have, wouldn't it not? Could it affect the grant? I guess I better rephrase that.
If DOT reviews the deviation...
The new funding?
Right.
No, I mean, the new funding is strictly for right-of-way acquisition.
Okay.
There's no construction funding, no redesign funding. That money is specifically earmarked for right-of-way acquisition. So if there was any unused funding at the end of the project, it could roll into future construction or return to PSRC if we came up short in the negotiation process and needed more funding, then the city would have to reach into their bucket and do that as well.
My comment is, additional comment here, the homeowners need to recognize that our deviated pathway is right up to their doorstep.
Mm-hmm.
And I know I wouldn't want that. But that, if they're willing to accept that and don't want to move, I can, you know, I can live with that, trying to make accommodations in the pathway.
Well, it's to the doorstep, but there's also the parking issue. And I think in all the public conversations we've had, for some reason, the parking issue has not really risen to the levels actually being the driver in this. You, the city has two areas of concern. One is that parking is removed, and therefore, the houses really aren't functional without parking, or that parking is across the street, which creates a liability as well. So really, the issue of the width of the right-of-way that's available, whether it's on the upland side or the non-upland side, it's really a, we're not looking for 14 feet, we're looking for 24 feet. That's really been the driver, and this is dealing with the parking issue.
There is no parking on the other side of the street.
There is no parking on the other side of the street. It was just proposed that the city provide parking on the other side of the street.
Currently, there is no parking on that side of the street.
Correct.
Mr....
Ms. Ashby.
I know that the question tonight is if we're going to move forward with the pedestrian path. What I've been able, the research I've done, I can't find any plans for the 14-foot plan, for the 14-foot path. What I found on the website is the 11-foot path, and the cost estimates we have to complete the project are, I'm assuming, from 2008. I'm wondering what the cost to us is going to be for that section of the pathway with the 14-foot path? And do we have, what's our opportunity for funding for construction? Because we could find ourselves in the same situation we are with Tremont, and that is to acquire the property and then not be able to get funding to complete the project.
Okay, I heard several questions there.
Oh, there were a lot of questions, yes.
And I'll try my best to answer. The current submitted to DOT, but not reviewed or approved, because they don't review or approve until you have construction funding. But the project that went through the shoreline process, the project that's been looked at by the Corps of Engineers, and I think I have the summary that I read out at the last meeting about where we're at on the status of all those, is a deviated plan. It stays within the right-of-way, and it takes basically the parking, and it goes up to the doorknob.
Yes.
That's what...
11-foot plan.
It's 11-foot, that's what went through the hearing, the hearings examiner, the substantial shoreline development permit process. That was what was reviewed as part of the JARPA/SEPA process. And again, that has yet to be approved by the Department of Transportation. The budget, the $3.6 million construction number, came from that plan. Now, we've built two segments, and we're building a third. And let's say they're all $500,000 each, so theoretically, that 3.6 is going to go down. But then it's going to increase, not substantially, but to go from 11 to 12. Maybe we don't go to 14. Maybe we can get a deviation to 12, so we're going to grow it by a foot. I don't know that until we make a decision if we're moving ahead or not, and then we look at all those scenarios. So I would still just, in general, because the 2010 $3.6 million number was still an engineer's estimate with $2,010, we're still in the general range of that number, given the fact that we've built three segments. Now, the question you asked about funding availability, and are we going to end up with a Tremont situation? You know, this, again, this is a project that the city initiated in 2005. It didn't do a, similar to Tremont, there wasn't like a pre-design process that really identified a route, was it feasible? These were just in play and pushed down the road with the funding and the process that was in place, that's evolved. And so we are on this precipice of, you know, finishing this project and putting money into right-of-way to push the project down the road in looking for construction funding. So I can't sit here and say guaranteed, we're going to get that money in two years or four years. All I can say is, under the funding mechanisms that have been in place, we've been able to get the design completed. It'll have to be revised, depending on tonight, potentially. We've got a million and a half, plus what we had from 2012, 2014 cycle, the 467, for right-of-way acquisition. So that's a known. And once we get through the right-of-way process, whatever that looks like, depending on council's direction, then if it's to move ahead with the project, once we have right-of-way acquisition done, then we can apply for construction funding. One of the differences between Tremont and this project is this was from a right-of-way acquisition plan development portion, we broke it into segments. Because even back in 2010, we started to see the change of the landscape and realized that, just like our conversation with the Bethel Corridor or this project, we needed to break this into segments. Now, that doesn't mean that, breaking it into segments doesn't mean that we get more time on the federal clock, because that's established in the federal, you know, code. But it does allow us to theoretically say, we need funding for segment six and seven, or segment eight, and apply. Now, I would apply for the full funding if we move ahead with the project. But I can't guarantee you when we'd get that, what it's going to look like. But again, we've theoretically, because we did segments, this year, in this funding cycle, the 15-17 cycle, everybody was fully funded, because the port got their money out of that emergency action funding. And so everybody was funded, and there was actually some extra money on the table. Theoretically, if that were to happen again, I could say, okay, we'll build segment six only. You know, we have that ability, but I would be looking to finish it in one fell swoop. So I think I answered your question about what's currently designed, but not yet approved through DOT, and that the funding, I can't say we'll have the full amount on a certain date. I mean, we're, to some degree, this is still like Tremont a bit, in that we're pushing the project down the road and hoping that it has a successful end.
Did the $3.6 million ever include property acquisition?
3.6, no. That was just, that was always just a...
Construction.
Sticks and bricks, yeah.
But we currently have an award that is for...
Property acquisition.
Property acquisition.
Right, we have basically two...
State that it...
We have 2.1, 2.2 million currently unspent in holding pattern for right-of-way acquisitions specifically. That's for the entire remaining acquisitions and easements and potential properties.
Mr. Chang.
I have a question for the Williams', if you don't mind answering. I have not been able to talk to any of the homeowners, obviously, during this whole process. And one thing puzzled me was that we understand that four of the five of the homeowners have agreed to sell. But I remember reading in the paper that you were not happy with selling your home. So I was wondering what made you change your mind to decide to sell if you weren't happy about selling? If you can answer that.
That's what they said, yeah.
That's an awkward question to ask.
I guess to answer, the way I could answer a question is that we had, like probably all of the homeowners, had not intended to sell, but through the process, we decided that it was best to be open to exploring what the offer would look like. It's not something that we have taken lightly, or just said, well, it's just all about the amount of money. We are attached to the community and attached to that particular home, so it would be a hard, you know, thing to give up, I guess. And so our initial thought was to say, that's not something that we would be interested in doing, but over the course of the process, we thought it would be best to just consider what the offer would look like.
So before you sit down, let me ask a question, too. Are you going to, you have another comment?
Yeah, it was my quote in the paper to Chris' last meeting. And it was more of a yes, but it's not something I'm excited about. It's more the kind of, say uncle kind of thing, and it's more, I wouldn't be looking for this option, I wouldn't be looking to get rid of the property. Who would sell in this market? This market is awful. There's, the appraisal isn't impressive, there is no gain in selling right now. So that's more, I'm not excited about selling, because I make nothing on my investment. That's the whole point I bought my home for. So that's, it's not a yes, it's a eh, yeah, I guess so, but it's for the greater good and all that kind of stuff. But I like where I live, my kids like where I live, and explain, who's, yeah, who's going to explain to the four-year-old what's going on with the cabin? So that was the answer in the question. Did you want some?
Yeah, I guess my question has always been, initially, you may not know this, but I think you might, we've always thought that we would use the city right-of-way, and that we really, as far as I remember, weren't going to take any of the homes.
Right.
And we were just going to go along and do the right-of-way. But that doesn't leave your house very desirable. And so, you know, at this point, your ability to sell, maybe not at the market value you want, but sell and then get relocation costs and stuff...
We don't qualify for that, since it's not a primary home.
You don't get any relocation?
Yeah, with meeting with Universal Field Services, we don't qualify for the relocation, just the moving expenses on the thing...
Better start cutting hair. Start cutting hair, and then you can relocate your business. Anyway, the point is that I always wondered why you would rather have this trail come by, again, it's in our city right-of-way, they're not going to take any property or anything in the initial plan, and I think even to this motion.
Still there.
I mean, I don't think I'd want to live there, I just don't understand everybody wanting to stay. I understand not wanting to sell, I just don't understand wanting to stay with that kind of a situation.
What? Okay. If you sit on the deck, the street's behind you, it's, you park and you come and you leave. And that's where, it's a beachfront place, like we don't see the street. I guess that's in the owner's view of it.
Okay.
Where the street is, it's, yeah, that's more, I don't even speak more formally.
Well, I think it's, again, it's a, I don't think it's a path at the doorknob issue, it's losing your parking. Having no place to park.
But I think ours with the PowerPoint, it's, we actually get two parallel slots in the spot, and we have parking, the way the houses are ran at, there is parking across the street there.
I think it would, it would be important to see where the line is, because in the plan that we looked at in 2011, there was some parking that remained, at least in our driveway.
Parallel parking, not perpendicular.
But some other things have changed. And the other comment that was made about parking was that there were some areas that were designated across the street, which I know have some safety issues with them, but across the street, there are some areas that are in the right-of-way, essentially, that could be carved out for parking, that are near the homes. And, you know, probably, I think in some version of this conversation, it seemed like there was an interest in providing for users of the path to have parking somewhere nearby. So in some way or another, I think there could be parking options, but I'm not sure what the, yeah, I'm not sure what the current drawing looks like. I guess I'm looking at it there. Well, so how many feet is that from the door?
The parking, yeah. The parking, what, we need to discuss the corner, the city will want there.
The other thing I heard, I heard Mark Dorsey say tonight was about us getting this money to pay you and the others who are interested for your property and such. But when that money is turned back, then it's either on the city's dime, if we have a dime. And so, you know, your opportunity to sell later, let's just say, this people going back and forth from your house kind of irritates you finally or something, or the parking arrangement turns out to be, you know, that's not so great. And then, but we can't buy your house, I'm just wondering, have you considered that? That your best opportunity to sell is really maybe now?
I believe...
I don't know, I'm just curious how your, what your thought process is, because I'm trying to figure out when I'm going to vote, and I want to understand your predicament, basically.
I don't, I don't believe that the path being there would be, it would cause a loss in value. If anything, I think it would enhance the value, because part of what we like about being there is you can walk to the city, it's part of the, part of the kind of life of being on the pathway. So we see a lot of advantages to having the path, both for the city and for what we like about the city, so I don't think that would change.
I do, too.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, are you guys locked into a sale? Or, I mean, our report here says that although not in agreement with the project, they are open to the city's offers of purchase, so does that mean that you've...
No, there's only been...
So they don't have to sale, sell, if they didn't want to? Okay.
No, remember Councilman Chang, that we had a federal contract and federal funding with Universal in the end of 2013, that was put on hold immediately, and then the city embarked on the, what we called the precursor work, which was following a federal process, a federal template, but not using federal money to simply bring information back to the council, what the appraisals would be, using a federal process, and have in-home negotiate, or conversations following the federal process exactly, but getting to the point to where it's just conversational at this point.
Okay, because what I heard from our briefs was that four had agreed to sell. So I wondered, does that mean that they are locked into selling, or they've just agreed at the current offer, but they could still not?
Absolutely. This was simply a fact-finding mission to see who would be willing to sell for the right price, versus who would not be willing to sell, and what those prices were. It was really, until the council gives staff direction on what we're doing, alternatives one, two, or three, or four, nothing is beyond... No.
And I have never seen a plan with the houses gone myself. And actually, there was discussion about this a while ago, and it was always in favor of keeping the houses there, and I'm also in favor of the pedestrian pathway, and trying to find a way to make those two work.
Well, again, the issue is parking.
I understand, I understand. But if they're willing to still have the place without the parking...
Well, and there are other owners who may have other thoughts about parking. I mean, we do like having parking, but I think we would like to be a part of a process to see what the options would be for parking, I guess, and if, I don't accept the answer that there's no other options for parking, I guess. And if you look at other, like, for example, the Burke-Gilman Trail in Seattle, there's areas that go right next to homes with very little parking, and that's one of the kind of trade-offs, I guess, of living near that type of installation. But I think in general, there have been ways of co-locating houses and paths next to each other with some arrangement for parking, even though it may not be as big as a typical driveway. These houses are very different in many ways, and so it's, I don't think it's, I don't think anyone has a lot of parking currently, anyway.
Right. The thing is, you know, it is a city right-of-way, and you have made use of it for personal, personal use for ages, and I know that's, I mean, it was historic, probably when you bought the house, it had been used, but it is city property, and basically, we're making use of city property. And what we're trying to do is make both of those things work.
Something I would like clarified, because owning the right-of-way in front of our house was what Randy and
The previous owner.
The previous owner purchased in 83, that we owned to the, our plat owns to the center of Bay Street.
No, the, the lines on the map, if you see the, I just highlighted and read when I sent that to you before, the line that's further to the left, that dash line, that was the actual city right-of-way in, prior to 1983.
Okay.
That footage that moved that line to where you see it, where it's going through that red car, that's where it is today. So the vacation that occurred in 1983, all that was vacated.
Okay.
And so
On the Kitsap County parcel viewer description, says owning to the center of Bay Street, I don't have it in front of me, but that's something we would need to clarify.
Well, a typical, well, so, everybody typically has fee ownership, so your legal will say, people typically, when they, they, everybody has fee ownership to the center of the right-of-way, and then there's an exception to then less 30 feet for the use of public right-of-way. And so, and that gets into the conversations we had about trees and sidewalks, that's the basis for that, is people, yes, everybody owns to the center of the road, but you give up a right-of-way for the half width.
So the purchasing was from the hash line to the straight line?
Right, so the current right-of-way prepared by our surveyor that took into account the 1983 vacation is that line that goes through the middle of the red car.
Okay.
Was the center of the road.
Which, there's two parallel
Yeah, it would have been the center of the road.
Of that, because that car is bonded.
Yeah, I mean
That doesn't, it doesn't appear to be similar to the parcel viewer.
If you go to the county parcel viewer, that's exactly what you'll see. Because I just highlighted over the parcel viewer. So, and this is, we also have a professional surveyor, so I'll have to
Yeah, I would recommend taking a look at it, it looks different on the parcel viewer to me, but I'm not a professional enough.
But again, the parking issue for the audience in the council was, in the process of the shoreline permit, the Haring Examiner had concerns with parking. And as an alternative, the city, and I remember I brought these to council, at the time, we generated some alternative maps that showed parking on the other side of the street. There was some parking down on, between the two southerly houses, and then there's a couple of parking stalls up near the Well 10 site. And that's what we tried to propose as an alternative. The city attorney, there were two really factors. One is, there's this issue of providing parking that would create a liability for the city, that we're going to actually park people across the street and have them walk and they get hit, and then we're liable. Then there was the whole mid-block crosswalk issue, that if we provided a mid-block crosswalk, we have the same issue. And so, providing parking on the other side of the street is just not a viable option unless you're going to go against, you know, you're going to take on that risk. And the state has said that no federal dollars will be, that approval of those parking spaces will not be a part of this project. The federal government and the state government will not
The ones that cross the street?
Yes, they will not participate in creating a liability.
Okay, I, Mr. Jones back there was trying to be able to say something, so Clerk Reinderson, could you take the mic back to him, so he doesn't have to come up and let him make his
Are the Williams sir talking, are you guys sir talking?
Oh, yeah.
Unless you have other questions.
Thank you.
Very much, appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Councilman Patazio, for making that motion. I do have currently one parking spot on my north side of my house, that doesn't run parallel with the house, it runs, you know, runs perpendicular, that I actually park on, that takes my entire car off the, off the 1983 parking, that leaves me one. And I do think that a mid-crosswalk should be, should still be considered and pursued at all costs, if you're taking away my parking there. I would like, I would like to stay, and I, along, like Ocean and Arlene says, you could have a freeway behind the house and you wouldn't know it once you're in the home. And so, I do want to pursue with more vigor a crosswalk and a parking, parking across the road. I had talked to Mayor Mathis, and to tighten, to untighten that curve, and also leave more parking out on the point. That's another option there. Or more space out on the point, and make that a less dangerous corner. At this point in time, like I said, I think this entire path isn't worth demolishing homes, and I think the council should look at the Public Works Department for putting them in the position, like, Mr. Carr right, said, how did we get to this point? When did this happen that we got to this point? And I think you should look really hard at this, because, you know, we've been up here screaming for some time, you know, don't take our homes. And you're told you have to give back $300,000 and lose a million and a half if you don't take our homes. And how did you get to this point? You should take a hard look at that. It's unprofessional. Thank you very much, and I do want to keep my home, and if I only have one parking spot there and three across the road, I'm happy.
Okay, council?
I have
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
Just one clarification. Earlier in the discussion, we heard the issue of the appraisal not being up to date and using a comparable. Can we, if people are interested, I'm assuming we can go forward with updating the appraisals to make them current.
The appraisal?
The appraisals have a shelf life.
Correct.
And so
The, the appraisals would have to be updated, well, first, we'd have to get Universal back on board, and, you know, a lot of the work is done, they would just be updating an appraisal and going through that process.
Well, and I would verify the comparables to make sure that they're valid comparables.
Right, and
I'm not an expert in appraisals, so
Right, and there's a, again, there's a negotiation process, a offer-counteroffer
Right.
Process that would still occur.
Mr. Chang?
I have a question for the attorney, and you may or may not be able to answer, but in the past, the original alternative for was said to require a vote of the, of supermajority of the council, because it would also tacitly involve condemnation if it came to that point. So, given the current hybrid of alternative floor that's been proposed tonight, do you believe that's the same case, that that involves condemnation and it needs a supermajority? Or does that just need a simple majority?
The motion that was before the council, you're saying that's the one?
Yeah, the one that's been proposed for tonight.
Where the council prefers to construct the non-deviated pathway, that, that motion?
On the floor.
There's no motion currently.
Yes, there is.
No, there is.
Oh, Rob's amalgam motion, I apologize.
Right.
A hybrid, yes.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Well, this, this motion does not require that, because it doesn't implicate condemnation, because, as I understand it, council prefers to construct non-deviated pathway, council should enter into negotiations with those willing to sell, and then for those unwilling to sell, the council will pursue a deviated pathway around those homes. So that doesn't involve condemnation.
Just a question mark. What will, will we get approval for a hybrid path? Because, again, we're asking us to spend money without knowing that we will get approval to complete the project.
Well, you answered your own question. I mean, basically, the alternatives that I had laid out, basically, were just very cut and dry. Even the construct the non-deviated pathway comes with some risk in that, you know, we still have to get the permits to build the pathway with the additional overwater shading, but I've been working with our consultant for months on determining the number of existing piling, the number of existing piling that are over riprap versus beach, the amount of shading over riprap versus beach because of the, because of the smelt run habitat, and so there's all these other swirling pieces. And I think I said at the previous meeting, you know, today, from an environmental permitting standpoint, my position is that with the houses staying and having overwater shading with the pathway, we're relying on the segment one current overwater shading being removed as our mitigation to build that piece. That's always been the mitigation for that, because we know we have to have mitigation for that permit. What we do know is that we're only dealing with fish and wildlife, because we've already gotten correspondence back from the Corps of Engineers, which, and the Coast Guard, so they're not going to invoke jurisdiction, but
Don't we have some willing sellers potentially for mitigation, though?
Yes, and, and so, I guess the point I'm not very well explaining is, the, the 100% guarantee that we'll get the permit to build full 14 feet, I can't guarantee that. Will we have to go to 11 or 12? But until we get to that point
Because of the mitig, okay.
Yeah, because it's, it's, you know, we've submitted for the segment three and segment four. We intentionally didn't include this, because we need to give fish and wildlife something we're going to do. So on the bridge crossing, we know what we're proposing and the mitigation, self-mitigating for segment four. So that's been submitted, and we're waiting for review, comments back. The, but this piece, until we know if we're going to terminate the project or move ahead with the project, we don't know, to answer the shading questions and to finish the table, this is, this table that I've got right now is, is based on all five houses going, you know, 335 piling, 14,622 square feet of shading, you know, adding 41 new piles, and 800, 8,380 new shading. So from an environmental ecological lift standpoint, we're reducing piling and overwater shading significantly, and that goes, that benefits the project. Now, it doesn't benefit individual homes that are trying to stay. I'm saying is that by removing the homes, and I said this at the last meeting, by taking the homes, to me, it boils down to two options, you either don't do the project, or you just do the project and take the homes, because by taking the homes and the overwater shading and the piling, that is going to significantly increase our chances of getting those environmental permits. And that's what I said at the last meeting.
No.
No. That's enough.
Now, we're, they're
We need to complete our delivery.
Yeah, they need to complete their discussion up here, Reddick, moment. Yes, Mr. Clausen?
I have a question, and I'm not sure, you're not a tax attorney, but I've always been led to believe that when a seller sells a piece of property under the threat of condemnation, there's tax benefits to that? And in this motion, we've eliminated those tax benefits?
I don't think it's a benefit, it's a, the real estate excise tax is not paid on that because of the threat of condemnation.
So there's a savings, a benefit.
Yeah, okay, you don't have to pay it.
Right, there's, in this federal process of acquisitions, on all the ones we did on Tremont, and then we're working on right now in Well 10, you know, you get your appraisal value and then relocation assistance, I guess, and the Williams' case, I didn't know that they didn't have that, but you also have, you know, you don't pay closing costs or any of those, and that's usually about 9%.
But there's also a tax benefit, I've been told, and I'm not sure, I've never sold anything under the threat of condemnation, but I've been told that there are tax benefits, if that is in fact the case.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
You also get the benefit of going to court if you feel negotiations aren't going your way, too.
That a benefit?
Well, potentially.
Potentially, the court could establish the value of the property, but this is a process that you go through before you get to court, and hopefully resolves the issues.
Anything else? Okay, I guess they're through with questions, could, could you please read the motion for us?
Counsel prefers, excuse me, counsel prefers to construct the non-deviated pathway, council should enter into negotiations with those willing to sell, and then for those unwilling to sell, the council will pursue a deviated pathway around those homes.
Doesn't sound the same.
That's the motion on the floor.
It sounds fine, though.
It's fine, but I don't think we're going to pursue the negotiations. Second council, it's
Yeah.
The city, I would think.
It's the company, whatever their company is.
The second council is the city, I believe.
Right, I was just reading.
Yeah, that's probably what I said, though.
You said it different each time.
I
I was trying to write it down and I gave up.
It was off the top of my head, I didn't write it down.
I'll record you.
I knew what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
Everybody now is on the same page with that motion.
So this is a hybrid of alternatives three and four?
Correct.
Okay.
One caveat, that will mean spending federal dollars. It will get Universal moving again, because the precursor work was just that, it was city-funded, non-binding, we'll have to have Universal's contract re-initiated, obligate the funding, and so at some point, if the council decides to do something differently, we'll just have to owe back more than the 300,000.
We'll be back here talking about it.
I just want to make sure
Well, the important thing is that 300 will go up.
Yes.
Just like Tremont, it'd go up, up and up and up, and it could be 300, 600, a million, you know, that we have to pay back if it doesn't follow up.
Just want to make sure, that's, that's the next step at this point, is to
They're spending the money.
Get Universal moving.
And I think once you bought a home, you don't get to reneg on that, no matter what happens, you own it, right?
No, that's true. And I guess one other point to, for those that own the homes, just because the city, let's say, the Williams has decided to sell, doesn't mean you have to vacate the home. And I guess one other point to, for those that own the homes, just because the city, let's say, the Williamses decided to sell, doesn't mean you have to vacate the home. They have the possession in use, until the city needs it, you just lease it back at a nominal rate, so you get money for the house, and then you just...
I think the nominal rate is a fair market rate, that you have to prove a fair market rate.
We did that with, with the Wood Apple building. So I, I'm saying is, just because the city were to purchase the property, doesn't mean you have to leave. You can actually continue to occupy the building through a lease agreement, so...
Here, I call for the question.
I second that motion.
All right.
By the way, I was just going to say, I would rather the...
The question's been called for, Mr. Charles, you have to resolve that issue first.
Well, then I got a point of order. The, what I'd like to say is, whatever's on that tape is what the motion should be, not what you just said, because I would like the motion to be what you said. It's on the tape, it doesn't take that long to get it from when Randy...
It's in spirit, other than city.
Yeah, well, I don't know, there was something different.
Do you want to hear it again? Do you want me to...
Or hear it the most.
Create something off the top of my head again?
I'm just saying.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yes, and, well, the motion on the floor is to end discussion. All those in favor of ending discussion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, we end discussion, now we have the vote, and the vote is as...
Do you want me to restate my motion again? The attorney to do it? Do you want me to do it?
She wrote it down.
Okay. I'll try to restate, so the council prefers a non-deviated pathway, the city should enter into negotiations with the property owners to acquire the homes, those willing to sell. In the event those homeowners don't wish to sell, we will pursue a deviated pathway in those areas.
Great, second.
I thought you did that, or...
I think we already have a second.
I know it, I'm just kidding.
All right, no more questions, no more comments, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, let the record show that we have one opposed.
It's Mayor Cola during the...
All right, we're going to dispense with reports from the city council, reports from the department heads and the other miscellaneous and adjourned this meeting, because we're way over time. Thank you for being here, appreciate it.